Commissioner Light.
President.
Commissioner Boswell.
President.
Commissioner Young. Commissioner Gaddis.
President.
Commissioner Conroy.
Here.
Commissioner Hazeltine.
Here.
Chairperson Craig.
Here, President. Okay, next, we will salute the flag. Mr. Conroy, would you be so kind as to lead us?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of North Carolina, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, can I get a motion to approve our...
Motion to approve order of agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Blue folder items.
Motion to receive and file blue folder items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can we do a printout of those if the commission is interested?
Okay, you guys got them. Yeah, we received those and we got the email as well.
Okay.
That's all good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we will now start our consent calendar. These are business items except those formally noted for public hearing or those polled for discussion are assigned to the consent calendar. Commission members may request that any consent calendar item be removed, discussed, and acted upon separately. Items removed from the consent calendar would be taken up under the excluded consent calendar section below. Those items remaining on the consent calendar will be approved in one motion. The chair will call on anyone wishing to address the commission on any consent calendar item on the agenda which has not been pulled by the commission for discussion. Each speaker will be permitted to speak only once and comments will be limited to a total of three minutes. Anyone want to speak about our consent calendar items? No one present? No one online?
There are no e-attendees that would like to speak on this.
Very good. And next for...
Motion to approve the consent calendar items.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next we have approving the minutes for the planning commission regular meeting of August 15th. I'm going to motion to...
They're included.
Oh, they are included, I'm sorry. That is included. Okay. Next we have public participation on non-agenda items. This section is intended to provide members of the public with the opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on this agenda for action. This section is limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes to address the commission. Each speaker will be permitted to speak only once. Written requests, if any, will be considered first under this section. Is there anyone here that turned the card or wants to speak online on non-agenda items?
There are no e-attendees that would like to speak.
Very good. And then we've already received and filed written comments. There's none on that, actually. Next would be ex-party communication. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure or ex-party communication about the following public hearings. I guess we'll start with Commissioner Light.
Nothing to declare, disclose, or anything.
Right, Commissioner Boswell.
Ditto.
Very good. Commissioner Gaddis. Commissioner Conroy.
Nothing to disclose.
And Commissioner Hazeltine.
I spoke with Chair Craig and also the public.
And likewise, I spoke with Commissioner Hazeltine and some members of the general public. Very good. So, we shall now start our public...
Motion to open the public hearing, J1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We shall begin.
Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. I'm going to turn this item over to our senior planner, Stephen Jiang, and he'll provide the presentation for tonight's, for this item. We also have the applicant available as well.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Stephen. I'll be presenting this item tonight, item J1, which is a discussion, discussion, consideration, and possible action of an exemption declaration in variance for reduced front yard setback, reduced side yard setback, and reduce outdoor living space for first and second story additions to an existing two-story single-family residence located on a property at 811 Spencer Street within a low-density, multiple-family residential zone. The subject property is located at 811 Spencer Street between North Irena Avenue and El Reggando. The lot is approximately 2,980 square feet in size with an approximate lot dimension of 55 feet along the front property line, 50 feet along the rear property line, 72 feet along the northern property line, and 48 feet along the southern property line. The zoning of the property is R3. It's low-density, multifamily residential. And this is the zoning for all surrounding residential properties in this area. The property currently has a two-story, single-family residence, which is approximately 2,058 square feet, and includes a two-car garage and was built around 1963. The variance is being requested to allow a reduction in the front yard setback, side yard setback, and the outdoor living space requirement due to special circumstances involving the lot's substandard size and the regular shape. The subject lot was created when the lot at 213 North Irena Avenue and the subject lot was subdivided into two. The site currently has a legal non-conforming rear yard setback, front yard, and northern side yard setback. The existing south side setback meets the required five feet for the modern code and the, in addition to the existing home, the property also has two detached rear storage sheds, and they're highlighted here in red. The applicant is proposing to remodel the existing single-family residence to expand the existing second story over the existing two-car garage as a second-floor addition. They're also including a first-floor addition and changing the orientation and approach of the existing two-car garage from indirect driveway to a direct driveway. They're also adding a new balcony and a new front porch. Additionally, the applicant is removing two rear sheds for the purposes of creating more outdoor living space, resulting in a total outdoor living space area of 583 square feet. In order to achieve the addition, the applicant is requesting for a variance for the front and the side. It's important to note that this addition will match the existing front facade for the residence and will not be increasing the nonconformity further than what it is now. Additionally, the removal of the sheds will also lessen the nonconformity of the lot itself by increasing the outdoor living space from approximately 300 square feet to 583 square feet. The zoning code currently requires an 800-square-feet outdoor living space. Staff is of the opinion that the variance is justified due to a number of special circumstances applicable to the project property, including the property has a substandard size and shape. Typically, in the city of Redondo Beach, the minimum lot size for any residential lot, including an R3 lot, is 5,000 square feet. However, this lot was created at 2,980 square feet. The depth of the lot is also considered substandard. In the R3 zoning, the lots are typically at 100 square feet minimums. However, this lot has two, both property lines are both substandard, so you have a 72-foot northern side lot length and a 48-feet southern side lot length. And then lastly, the outdoor living space, because of the size of the lot, is currently nonconforming and substandard, and so the removal of the sheds will also alleviate the nonconformity. Here's the site plan of the project. The red line signifies the closest point in which the house will be to the front property line. The addition, again, is not increasing the existing nonconformity, but is matching the existing structure to the front property line. However, when you compare it to the northern red line, you'll see that the northern part of the house is in conformance with the zoning code as it stands because the requirement is at 15 feet off the front. However, due to the slanted shape of the front property line, the house does not meet the front setback requirements because one part of the house is at 9.1 feet and the other house is at 16.5. The northern side setback of this property is also considered nonconforming. They're currently at 4.8 feet, and the additions will also match the existing facade at 4.8 feet. Keep in mind, the requirements for both the north and the south side setbacks are five feet. No construction is proposed at the rear facade except for the removal of the sheds. And along the southern side, they will meet the required five-foot setback with the proposed additions of the front porch. Here are the proposed floor plans. The first-story addition will consist of a new entryway from the proposed porch and then changing the orientation of the existing garage door so that it's a direct-axis driveway. The garage will have its doors removed from the southern side to the western side. And a new 78-square-foot front porch is also proposed on the first floor. On the second floor, the addition will consist of a 482-square-feet master bedroom, which includes also a laundry room, a nook, and a 107-square-foot balcony. Here are the elevations for the project. The green are the new proposed additions compared to what's existing there now. To clarify, the rear elevation east, that green on the far bottom left is just the front porch that you can see peeking from the rear, from the backyard. As a part of the variance finding, the planning commission must find that the subject, that the subject property's irregular shape, substandard size and depth, and existing setback encroachments create unique hardships justifying relief from the standard yard and outdoor space requirements, that the approval conditioned on matching the new addition setbacks, existing nonconformities, and removing two rear sheds to expand usable outdoor area prevents any unwarranted privileges. And the last finding is that granting the variance advances the general plan policies related to preserving established neighborhoods and encouraging compatible infill by allowing modest, scale-appropriate additions and improving on-site open space without undermining the neighborhood character or public welfare. Additionally, the map on the right shows multiple dots. The dots in the green are previous variances that have been approved due to similar circumstances. The dot to the north was a variance that was approved sometime in the 60s, and the dot to the south was a variance that was approved around 2019. The yellow lots, the yellow dots are just other substandard lots that are less than 5,000 square feet identified by staff. Just so the planning commission can see that this area is a little bit unique in its, in terms of substandard lots and the densities for it. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the exemption declaration and grant the variance subject to the findings and conditions contained within the attached draft resolution. This concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Boswell.
So, it seems as though there's nothing new as far as these setbacks. These are the same setbacks that were, that exist now.
Yes.
And they will be the same setbacks once the additional construction is completed, right?
Yes, the only...
There's really no change.
The only real change is going to be the southern setback. They are increasing that a little bit, but they are still conforming with the zoning code.
The southern setback, which is that...
The porch.
Shorter side.
No, it's a, the southern setback is going to be here. Let's have a better picture of it.
On the bottom of the... Oh, on the bottom. Oh, on the bottom.
Yeah, so this porch here, yes.
The front's in there now, they're taking them out.
Yeah, okay.
That's correct.
So it's pretty much the same footprint.
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay. I'm done.
Indeed. Commissioner Conroy.
First question, we saw some things from the public, but I'd like to know, do we have, do we have any neighbors that have submitted letters of support or opposition to the project?
We did not receive any formal letters of support or opposition in terms of emails. The only public comments I've received were the e-commerce that came in that you, you all received as a blue folder item.
I'm sorry.
So we did not receive any, um, public, we did not receive any emails or letters in support or against the project besides the blue folder e-comment that you all received.
Okay. Shall I go on?
Please.
The lots on either side aren't of this, aren't split. Do, do we know why the split was allowed way back when, creating two nonconforming lots?
That's what they used to do.
This. Yeah, so the split happened prior to the sixties, and so what likely happened was that the zoning code back then didn't, this was legal back then, but throughout the decades, the zoning code changes and minimum lot size were created, so that we, essentially the code created the nonconformity as time went on.
Okay. With this being R three, is there any design standards that these additions must meet for the city?
Yeah, it just needs to meet the objective design standards, but this project, since it's mirroring closely to what's existing there now, we, staff believes that it meets the objective design standards.
Okay, and the planning department verified that the reoriented garage is gonna meet the current, and driveway meet the current visibility standards?
Yes, we confirmed with the traffic engineering division and with the senior engineer that the driveway flip and change would not cause any issues. Additional conditions were added too regarding replacing the curb cut by traffic engineering, and that was it.
Okay, there's no sidewalk along that side of the road, correct?
I don't think there is, yeah, it's mainly the right-of-way that's there now.
Of the right-of-way?
Yeah, and so, um, there was conditions also added, I believe, that ensured that parking doesn't encroach into the right-of-way for the driveway, but the driveway meets the minimum length for driveways.
On one side only, or both sides?
Both sides. The minimum length for a driveway in the city is nine feet.
And it's nine point one, and it's.
On the shorter side.
So they would qualify to be able to park cars, two cars, on that driveway?
Correct.
And then you said that there's some, something, somewhere that says they're not able to go past the property line into the.
Correct, technically, they would fall under parking enforcement at that point, and they could be cited for parking in the right-of-way.
Okay. Do you guys have any concern that approving this might open the door for similar requests? Are we kinda setting a precedent by doing this?
No, precedent has already, I would say precedent has already been set by the two variances that were approved and the nature of the lots that were created before the zoning code had the, the minimums. It's not, it's plausible to believe that we will see future variances for this area for similar reasons from the other yellow dots if they ever decide to redevelop their homes. Thank you, that's all I have.
Great. Commissioner Hazelton.
Yeah, I do think there was a house that we had in this area about three or four years ago with the same situation, and we've also had houses that didn't have a small lot line, I mean, a small square footage, and we did not grant variances. But in this case, you can see, it's not really changing the footprint terribly much because there's a, I drove by it, there's a garage, and then on top of the garage is, I think, a balcony. Yeah, and could we talk to the applicant? Okay, so the only thing that I really noticed when I was driving around there, and something we wanna think about, or driving around just in that part of Spencer Street, is there's not a lot of greenery there. You know, with ten foot on one side, that's more than enough to put a hedge, and then six foot in the back you could do, and I, and we didn't get any kind of a landscaping ideas or, so I would like to ask him about that.
Certainly, if you'd like to come to the podium and speak, first I have to swear you into.
Both of us in, you just have to swear yourself in.
In order to testify, did you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do, thank you. And if you wanna answer the question, that'd be great.
Yeah, so what did you have planned for landscaping?
For our front yard?
Yeah, so initially, if you, we have a rendering, I don't know if you, if planning got the right, they should've gotten this rendering. So it's an initial, there's nothing, nothing specific yet at this point, but we are happy to bring on, have our landscape architect look at it if that's something I'd concern.
Well, it is, so one thing that is important to me is that we not have any artificial turf, right? And I think that when you look around there, if you just take a look around, you guys need some height, so a hedge, you know, something that, I mean, the house that's behind you when they split the lot, you two look right into each other's, neither one of you have any vegetation in the backyard. Have either of you thought about putting anything, have you lived there a while?
Yeah, the question is what backyard?
So what do you do with your six feet, right?
Yeah, it's, babe, you're, you're absolutely right, there's no landscape.
So I know for a fact, cuz I've got a, you know, I have a hedge in a side yard.
Yeah.
And it's really doable, and what else is doable is just to grow a vine up that so that, I mean, do you really wanna be looking into your neighbor's backyard? So it's just maybe something you guys haven't thought about, but something that I think is so important for beautifying the neighborhood, it also brings birds in, you know, it's important. So, and you have ten feet on the news, on the side that you're putting your door at, your front door at, that's plenty of feet. Yeah, I mean, and there's patio trees that, that are small enough that, you know, some kind of a tree that maybe only gets eight feet, that isn't going to become a huge ficus and then over, oversized the house, but there's plenty of options, but I would just recommend that you look around, it'll make a huge difference for the four houses in a row that it looks very barren.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, currently, you saw that we have like a giant hedge there now with the driveway.
In the front, but that's where you're putting your driveway, right? So that's coming out.
So we'll definitely think about.
Yeah.
You have a hedge there along with two sag o palms and a palm tree from what I can see, right?
Yeah.
So it seems like.
Right, that comes out.
If that all goes away, to your point.
There's no height at all, so if you drove by the property, you will see that there are two houses where it's split, and there, there's literally nothing between the two houses. There's not one little bit of vegetation at all, and I can understand that, it's six feet, what are you gonna do with it? But believe it or not, there are things you can do with that to bring height up so that we feel like we have some vegetation in neighborhoods. It's so important as we know.
Great comment, thank you for that.
So, so beyond looking at it, can we get a commitment from you to replace with at least three trees from the ones you're removing?
Well, what we can do.
My only concern is, is, you know, traffic, not, not that it's a busy street, it's not a busy street, but I, I, I would, I, the idea makes a lot of sense, especially nearer the house, but closer to the street, I, I think that would not, not be as, as good as.
So we don't have, we don't, I can only look at this.
Yeah.
What, where the walkway is, for example. Okay, and that's ten feet. So let's say you, whatever kind of tree, I mean, it's just a smaller something.
Like along, along the bottom, like by the fence, is that where you're?
By your south fence.
South fence, okay.
You know, you should, I mean, landscaping makes a house, right? And so, I mean, as an architect, you probably don't think that.
No, no, I do, I agree, I agree, I, I, can I?
Yeah, yeah, I think, oh, sure, yeah, by all means.
So I think that's the rendering we initially, it wasn't, again. No, I don't think we have that.
No, we don't.
No, we didn't get that, okay? And then what's, so is this your idea, or is that what's there now?
That's all right.
Okay, perfect, that's what I'm talking about?
I think that's what you're talking about, yeah.
It's on the board now.
Hear how you have a little tree right here?
Oh, there you go, on the left right now.
Okay, beautiful, so what I'm gonna tell you is this is gonna be a condition that will add.
This is a condition that they put this in?
Yeah, so we'll make this a condition.
And it's on the screen now.
And I'd like also for you to.
There you go.
You know, it's tough to put a tree in the backyard, but you can definitely do a hedge or whatever.
That could be next door.
A tall, like I have a, between my neighbor, we have a Eugenia hedge, which right now, well, it'll get up to thirty feet, but it's twenty feet now. So something like that, yes, you have to trim it, but it will fit there.
No, it's.
Okay, so just an idea.
Makes sense.
We seem to have different pictures, and I think that picture is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, they need to see it at that end.
Page sixty-one of the packet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Oh, it's the presentation, that's what I'm looking.
Yeah.
This is the presentation.
Presentation's a little different.
Sixty-one of the package.
Right. And is that, on that sixty-one, is that tree that's there on the other side on the other property, or that's just, you put that in there?
Nothing's there right now.
Nothing's there right now, that's fantasy.
It's very naked.
But it's on the other side, not there.
They don't have the room for tree, trees like that, I don't think. They actually did have a giant tree, they had to get it removed. Yeah, so.
There's not much space there.
That's not gonna be like that. What about that palm? Is that palm already there?
There is a palm up front.
Is that the one that we're seeing in the rendering?
Not a hundred percent sure about that.
That's where the driveway is going to be.
Yeah. It's, it's in the right-of-way.
It's still there with the driveway, but I don't think it would be.
It's getting taken out, I think.
Yeah, I don't think it could.
There is a palm closer to the utility pole, so further, further on the.
Further south?
Yes, further south. There's an existing palm tree, utility pole here.
Okay.
And this is the property line, so it's in the right-of-way.
So there is a palm tree.
There may be a tree.
Okay.
Yeah. And, Joel, can you give me a fair, can you put on two-way for a second?
It's outside the property line.
Well, it doesn't matter, they can't, they're not gonna.
I know, I see that, but what's this say? That says property line, right? Or is this just a seven-foot setback from the property?
I wanted to.
Oh, there we are.
Commissioners, I just wanted, I wanted to show you, full disclosure, I've actually been in your house not once but twice when it was for sale in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. I had a client, I actually looked through it two different times, so I, I was very, I was like, I think I've been in this house, and I looked in, I actually saw it, but I wanted to just show the other commissioners here. This is just like a Google street view, but this is like, I don't know how long ago this picture was taken, but to give you an idea, on the street, this is like if you stood in the middle and did a three sixty, so if you look, this is looking north, there's no sidewalk to the side, and you can see that hedge that Commissioner Hazelton was talking about with that small palm, but that's where the driveway would be going. And then, turning around, again, you've got a mix of a lot of different types of houses there, it's certainly not a, you know, really homogenous neighborhood, a lot of things there. There's even an apartment building, as you see to the left on the side there, and that's just kinda turning around. So obviously, you know, it's, it's not a.
Wayne, is there any way to see what's to the right of this, south of that, or it's all?
Yeah, it got blurred out when I looked it on the Google Maps.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone else has got a better shot of it. Actually, well, actually, here, I could show you a, this is when the houses were for sale last time on the MLS.
Yeah.
So this is, this is, I think, from twenty eighteen, though, it's probably a little ways, little ways out. Let's see, I've got another one here.
But you get an idea, on the right, on the north side of the lot, there's nothing, on the east side of the lot, there's not, that tree that you see there's gone on the backside, there's nothing between the other split side of the lot, and it, it looks very barren, so definitely landscaping.
And there's like the backyard.
Can you go back to that last picture of the garage real quick, Wayne?
Sure.
That one? Come in a little bit, yeah. Questions, see how you've got the planters along that side of the garage? That, that all goes away for the new door, you're not extending the garage out at all to where those planters are, okay?
Just moving it to the side, actually.
Those actually don't exist, that's from prior.
Yeah, that's always, I think it's twenty eighteen, I think it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, and just some other comments on that, I, I think, having gone through the house before too, I mean, I think what you're planning makes a lot of sense, certainly will be more value to you and, you know, obviously, for your family in the future, so it, to me, it seems to fit in the neighborhood, it's not, you know, a giant big mansion and a bunch of neighborhood of small, little bungalows, and it's certainly, it's a, it's a very unusually shaped lot, and as you saw on the maps, and I think I can show you on this as well, if I can get this thing back here.
I have a question for Commissioner Hazelton.
Sure, let me pull this up for a second.
Commissioner Hazelton, what would you, what would you like the condition to look like related to the?
Well, I think it's easy enough to just recommend that it actually looks like the picture that they put in, that you have in your rendition.
If I may, Commissioner, I've drafted a condition if we wanna try this out. So additional landscaping in the form of hedge and/or climbing vines in the rear and southern side yards, and additional landscaping as illustrated in the proposed renderings.
Perfect.
Great.
Yeah. And we, we do actually tend towards natives, California natives, so just FYI, that's what we've been putting in the, the design guidelines and stuff.
Yeah.
Anybody?
Any other questions, anyone concerned? Commissioner Conroy.
First question, did you guys explore any design, well. Never mind, you're using the existing structure, so that wouldn't apply. Are you willing to commit to no further expansions beyond this request?
Yeah. Expansion, like addition, additional.
Additional addition.
Outside of underground.
No, no, we didn't use or anything.
I might wanna clarify, they do have allowable areas that could have some development based on setbacks. There is the outdoor living space issue, but we'd have to look at the legal nonconforming provisions and see if there was some, so there's zoning ordinance, regulations that speak to, you know, their legal right to develop, and if there is something still there, I wouldn't recommend that the commission tried to infringe upon that.
So that would be that ten-foot setback, we, they could if they wanted, pull that wall out, Commissioner, to five feet, it's a side setback. So for example, they would, we couldn't do that.
Even though we're allowing nonconforming on one side, we can't get them to commit to not expanding on another?
No, but the planning commission that's in charge at that time, if they were to come and ask for those additional five feet, could say no.
Right. And we're also subject to changes of laws too with Sacramento, we may be moot in the future if they have their way.
Yeah, that, that's sort of what I was gonna ask about, fact that this outdoor living space is very limited, and when you're a half lot, you're not gonna have a lot of outdoor space there, so I think that kind of limits what could be built there, is what I think you.
Yes.
But yeah, I'm kinda curious of this, given this mandate from the state, unless we can get some of that reversed by initiative, could that come in and say you could put two buildings on this size lot, I mean?
Theoretically, yeah.
I think that's what that law would say, right?
But that can happen with any lot in the city at this point.
Any lot in the city can be subdivided, at least two and maybe four if they feel like it.
Right, and there's been other ones.
And an ADU plus that.
But John, don't they have to have two separate entrances? I mean, this is a skinny lot, so I remember we learned that most of the lots in this city would never even work because they, they don't meet the requirements, at least that's what Brandy was saying all the time, you know, they, they, okay, here's a perfect example, on Prospect, we're going off topic, they did, they did take, the lot ran the front of Prospect, so they, if you look on it, Prospect and Nob Hill, just go south of Nob Hill on Prospect, you can see that they did do it, but remember, Brandy had told us, there was only a couple, that was one of them. You can see they put three houses, because the house ran, the house ran from, on Avenue A, it ran from, toward, from, from, you know, let's see, it ran from south, north, south, I'm making this difficult, on Prospect, they divided it three times.
Right, that, that.
You know which house I'm talking about, Wayne? Yeah. So it's gone and three are up.
Right, because they, they all have a separate entrance.
They all have separate entrances, but that's a rarity that you would have a lot like that.
Yeah, and so, so, I mean, like, we're, we're kinda going to hypotheticals, but, I mean, you know, there was a bill that came up recently where they were going to allow up to eight units to be built on every single lot. That was defeated, but who's to say more of those not come up? I, we can't really control the future beyond what we have here right now, unfortunately.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, just to finish my thought, this looks very reasonable in terms of what you planned to do, it's not changing the setbacks at all, so.
I agree.
I I would agree with that too, like I said, it's, because then having been through the house, I know it sounds strange, but now if you went through the house, I think, I think what you're planning is certainly- Are there any other questions for staff or anyone else, or?
I think Wayne's going to make a mo-, I mean, Commissioner Gaddis is going to make a motion.
Oh, I thought you were going to do it.
Oh, okay, I'd like to make a motion. We don't have to close. Oh, do we have anybody online?
Uh, is there any, uh, some, any commentators online?
We have two e-attendees, but no one is requesting to speak at this time.
That's his wife and my staff.
So I'd like you to make a motion to accept J one P C twenty-five dash zero nine two zero. Uh, with the conditioner, condition of, as Sean-
Stated to be condition sixteen added to the resolution, and happy to read it.
Yeah, thank you.
Additional native landscaping?
Okay.
In the form of hedge, a hedge and or climbing vines in the rear and southern side yards. And additional landscaping as illustrated in the proposed renderings in the front yard?
Yes.
That's it.
Second?
I second it.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Light?
Aye.
Commissioner Boswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Young? Commissioner Gaddis?
Aye.
Commissioner Conroy?
Can I ask staff a question before I vote, or is it too late for that?
We haven't.
We haven't closed comment with staff yet. You can, I believe you can, we haven't cut off comment.
Okay, thanks. Uh, is there any requirement for them to notify their neighbors about during construction about noise or anything like that?
There is, there's, there's requirements for fencing the property, signage and notifications to adjacent properties, yes.
Okay, knowing that, uh, I vote in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Hazelton?
Yes.
Chairperson Craig?
Uh, yes, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we have, um, item K, items continue from previous agendas, anything we have continued?
Uh-huh, bye, have fun.
So do we have any items continue from any previous agendas?
I guess I'd take that as a no.
Okay, uh, and items for discussion prior to action, I don't believe we have anything there either.
No, but I did, I think this is when I would say this, um, I should have said it during the blue folder item time, but I think I can do it now. We got a blue folder that says Citizens for Redondo's Trees Interested, they're going to have a meeting on Sunday, July thirteenth at one P M. Uh, Redondo Room at the Beach Cities Health District, and it's bringing together community members who share a common interest in protecting and growing Redondo's Tree Canopy and ecosystem. This meeting will discuss current challenges and opportunities in forming a collaborative organization to safeguard our urban forests for future generations. Um, and it gives a website, redondofortrees@gmail.com, and I think that anybody interested, this sounds like a good meeting. It's our blue folder item tonight, if you're looking for more information.
As a matter of formality, I motion, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Do I have a second for that?
I'll lose in shape.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, it's closed.
Thank you for the formality.
The formality.
Okay, and then, uh, items from staff?
Tonight's staff has no items to share, I will just mention, um, upcoming agendas. Uh, and particularly the general plan update, we're re- bringing that up again starting in July with council. So that'll, well, that'll be the land use element, open space and conservation element, noise, safety elements. And the planning commission's recommendations that went with those are also going to be in that package that ultimately goes to the council, so.
That's probably, so that would also include the discussion of the FAR and all those issues as well.
Yes, all the F A R discussions will kick off and and then we'll see how council wants to navigate that going forward.
And any, uh, any idea if and when we're going to hear about the Galleria project?
I, we, I actually emailed them today saying, you know, we're, we're gearing up for the next meeting of this body for the phase two. But we're, we're just waiting to, you know, for them to confirm they're ready to go.
Okay, so it might be in a couple of months or something.
It could be, we're, we're, we're waiting to hear back.
Very good, okay.
Okay.
And then, uh, commissioner member, commissioner member items and future commission agenda topics?
I think that was it.
That was it?
Motion to adjourn?
I have one thing, one statement I want to make first.
Somebody's eager to get going.
I I just want to make something, like, I I heard this a lot from the general public, and it has to do with comments that are made, it's just to make online. And I know some of us in public have made something, and there's a comment that was actually made recently by Commissioner Boswell that I wanted to maybe elaborate on a little bit. He made a comment saying that he serves on a commit, on the planning commission, which is one of the best in the city, and I wanted to correct him and say it is the best in the city. And I think it's probably one of the best cities, I think it's one of the best that the city has ever had. And so I just want to thank all of you for the hard work you all put in here, and, uh, it's, it's a pleasure working with all of you and, uh, having thoughtful, informative discussions and coming up with the great solutions, and I I really value that a lot. Mayor Brand tried to get me on this commission six years in a row, and I'm really happy I'm on it and serving with all of you here. Thank you.
And shout out for-
Amendment?
You may, you may.
I think this is one of the best planning departments.
I I would agree. There you go.
Very, very.
I gotta tell you, Sean.
Thank you very much, Mark, thanks you as well.
And I want to give out a shout out to our ex-commissioner Sheila Lamb, who worked her tail off while she was here for the four years almost.
And long, long before that, uh, that most people will never know about all the work she did.
Yes, she's a hard, hard worker.
And, uh, and other things, you know?
Very good, so, uh, with that, uh, as a note, do we have a motion to dismiss?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.